County Planning Commission, and we'll begin with a few introductory comments. As a courtesy to everyone in the meeting room tonight, please make sure that all cellphones are turned off. Please note that tonight's Planning Commission meeting will be recorded live and available for viewing by the members of the public afterwards on the www.minhahacounty.org site. In observance of the CDC guidelines for social distancing, tonight's meeting is taking place simultaneously within the County Commission Meeting Room and virtually within a Zoom Meeting Room online. In the Zoom Meeting Room, each individual user on the line will be on mute to maintain communication clarity for everyone. Every item listed on the agenda will be read separately. If any member of the public wishes to be heard on an item, you may raise your hand while I read the item description. If hands are raised, we will follow our normal hearing procedure by requesting planning staff to present a report on each item and then request the petitioner to come to the podium and make a statement or answer any questions. Anyone from the audience wishing to address the items shall be recognized by planning staff in the order hands are raised and state their name and address for the record. The Planning Commission will then discuss the matter and take appropriate action. For those participating remotely, please watch, make sure that you raise your hands in the Zoom program. First on the agenda is public input. Anyone here wishes to speak on an item that is not on the agenda? And please raise your hand if you are attending remotely and you will be on muted for comment.
There's no one on Zoom except for us.
Item number one on the agenda is the minutes from the April 26 Planning Commission meeting. Any comments or changes to the minutes?
Madam Chair, I think there was a suggestion we move item two to the, be right after item eight. Is that...
That's correct.
So I will make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to move item number two to the item after item number eight. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, we will now move on to the minutes from the April 26 meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of April 26. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Items number two, three, four, five, six, and eight are conditional use permits, and item number seven is an application for preliminary plan. Any final action taken under the conditional use permits tonight will take effect five working days following this meeting unless a written appeal of the Planning Commission's decision is filed in the Planning Office by Tuesday, June 1st at 5:00 p.m. In the event of an appeal, the decision will be referred to the County Commission for a hearing on Tuesday, June 15, 2021, at or after 9:00 a.m. The affected parties will be notified of the meeting date, and meetings of the County Commission are held in the same room. Action taken on the preliminary plan is a recommendation which will be forwarded to the County Commission for a hearing on Tuesday, June 15, 2021, at or after 9:00 a.m. Meetings of the County Commission are held in the same room. Since item number two has been moved, we will move on to item number three. That is conditional use permit 21-36 to transfer one building eligibility from the southeast quarter to the northwest quarter, to the northeast quarter, the northwest quarter, all in Section 9, Township 104 North, Range 51 West. The petitioners are Ryan and Sarah Vanderflett, and they're also the property owners, three miles northwest of Colton. It says Ryan sits on the board, he will have to recuse himself...
I will.
...and move to the audience, please.
Thank you. Scott Anderson, Planning Director, and this is a pretty simple, straightforward request to transfer one building eligibility. The property is located about three miles northwest of Colton. It's a half mile east of the intersection of 462nd Avenue and County Highway 104. The applicant is requesting to move one landlocked building eligibility from the southeast of the northwest quarter and moving it to the northeast of the northwest quarter. And the noted location would be directly east of the residence that you can see on the map above you. The applicant has indicated that the lot is somewhat cut off from the rest of that farm ground by a waterway, which you can see south of, on the property, on the air photo. So staff is recommending approval with two conditions: that a right-to-farm notice be filed before a building permits issued for a single-family residence, and second, that approval from the County Highway Department be obtained for the location of the driveway before a building permits issued. So I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions for Scott?
Madam Chair, this is a pretty routine item. Is there anyone in opposition?
Anyone else care to speak to this item? Anyone on Zoom?
Opposition, I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
A motion is made and seconded to approve conditional use permit 21-36. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. That has been approved. Item number four, conditional use permit 21-39 to exceed 3,600 square feet of total accessory building area, requesting 4,302 square feet. On the property legally described is tract two, errands addition, northeast quarters, Section 12, Township 103 North, Range 51 West. Petitioner is Michael Peterson. He's also the property owner. It's three miles southwest of Colton. Kevin?
Kevin Rockman, County Planning Department. This item is another pretty routine item, succeed 3,600 square feet of total accessory building. Petitioner already has an existing structure on the property, as you can see from the aerial imagery there, and he is requesting to build an additional 36 feet by 60-foot accessory building on the property. And I'll bring up the site plan. It'll be located a little bit to the north and west of the current building. He will remove a few trees to do so, but few of the tree rows will stay in the same place. The petition is for personal storage only, and staff has six conditions for approval. So any questions?
Any questions for him? Petitioner here, will you please come forward, state your name and address?
Michael, excuse me, Michael Peterson, 25115, 466th Avenue, Colton.
Questions for him? Is there anyone else cares to speak to this item? Haven't anybody on Zoom?
In the absence of opposition, I make a motion to approve conditional use permit 21-39.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and second to approve conditional use permit 21-39. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. You've been approved, you're free to go.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Item number five, conditional use permit 21-41 to transfer one billing eligibility from the northwest quarter, the southwest quarter, to the northeast quarter, the southwest quarter. On the property described as the southwest quarter, there's an exception of the E 642, the North 596, and accept AC in northwest quarters, southwest quarters, lying west of road, lying west of the road, also described in meets and bounds, described in Book 457, Page 40, Section 30, Township 103 North, Range 50 West. Looks like the petitioner is Josh Shutey. Property owner is Michael Boer, Boer Investments. It is two miles south of Lyons. Kevin?
All right, again, another transfer for this evening. The petitioner is removing one building eligibility from a low-lying, wet area that's also in the flood plain to higher land near residential property. This is along Grand Meadow Street, which is like a half-mile township road. This is clustering of building eligibilities, and staff is recommending approval with the recommendation of right-to-farm covenant notice. Is there any questions?
It's for him? Is the petitioner here? Petitioner here, will you please come forward and state your name and address?
Josh Shutey, 809 Northwest Avenue, Creek, South Dakota, 57020.
Any questions for him?
Are you on the fire department?
Yes, sir, I'm currently chief of Lyons.
Anyone else out there care to speak to this item? Commissioners?
I'll make a motion to approve conditional use permit 21-41. I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second to approve conditional use permit 21-41. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. It has been approved, you're free to go. Item number six, conditional use permit 21-42 to transfer one billing eligibility from the northeast quarter, northwest quarter to tract one, MCD addition in the northwest quarters, Section 10, Township 104 North, Range 47 West. Petitioner is Tim Quam. They're also the property owner, it looks like, five miles north of Sherman.
And we have another billing eligibility transfer. This is in the northeast part of the county. The petitioner is requesting a taken eligibility off of existing farmland and moving it onto a former farmstead and sharing that farmstead property with another residential dwelling and with a split in two different properties. This is near the Moody County Dairy, and the Moody County Dairy has been working with the petitioner and with the landowners regarding this for housing for their employees, so it is not in any sort of way, it will not be something that'll become a nuisance to the dairies in future cases where they might be opposed to the dairy operation. So with that being said, staff is recommending approval of the conditional use permit with the right-to-farm covenant notice.
Any questions for him? Is the petitioner here? Will you please come forward and state your name and address?
Mark Rogan, 48194, 252nd Street, Garrison, South Dakota. I'm representing Tim and Lynette Quam in this. Yeah, I don't have any questions. We're moving it, they still have two eligibilities left, but we left them, they're next to the county highway that's there in case they ever want to move them in the future, but no, so just any questions?
Questions for him? Anyone else care to speak to this item? Anybody on Zoom? Commissioners?
Madam Chair, I move the approval of item number six, conditional use permit 21-42. Second.
I have a motion and second to produce, for conditional use permit 21-42. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. It has been approved. Move on to preliminary subdivision plan 21-02 to allow subdivision of Peterson's first addition in Section 3, Township 102 North, Range 49 West. Petitioner is Tyson Haas, property owner Billy Peterson, three point five miles north of Sioux Falls. Scott?
Thank you. Scott Anderson, Planning Director, and what you have in front of you today is a preliminary plan for a new residential subdivision, and this is property that's about two miles north of Renner on the east side of Highway 115, and has been for many years the Peterson Mobile Home Park. They are redeveloping this site and transitioning it from a mobile home park into lots that can be sold off and stick-built homes could be constructed on. Many of the mobile homes have already been removed from the park, and the applicant has presented a preliminary plan which generally follows the same concept of the lot, the street layout and lot layouts as the current mobile home park, and I will show you that on the map, on the overhead. The streets will be platted, and these streets will need to be hard-surfaced because they are coming off a hard-surfaced state highway. The applicant has indicated that they are proposing to develop this property in three phases. I have reviewed the preliminary plan to make sure it meets all the requirements of Section 401 of our county subdivision ordinance, which outlines what is required on a preliminary plan. The applicant has provided all of the information that's required, which included detailed topographic informations, typical crossroads, cross-sections for the road construction engineered, which were engineered. There was a grading and a drainage plan and an extensive erosion control plan. These lots, there's 40 of them, will range in size from 1.001 acres, so one acres, to approximately two acres, which meets the minimum lot size for the rural residential zoning district. The entire site will utilize onsite wastewater disposal systems, so septic systems, and will also then hook up to Minnehaha Community Water. There are existing water lines that are servicing the mobile homes, and any review of the existing wastewater systems would need to be done to see if they could be reused, but it should be noted that any system would have to meet the current state standards or replaced, so it is on the burden of that property owner to, if they do decide to use that, that they prove that it meets the requirements. The primary road that runs through the new residential subdivision is Jade Men Court. This is a looped road, and then there are two approaches onto County Highway, or sorry, State Highway 115. Then there's a number of roads that extend off of Jade Men Court. These engineered, these roads have all been engineered, and the engineering is in my office. The applicant will either need to construct the roads to meet subdivision standards prior to selling any lots in this subdivision, or provide surety, post-surety for the construction, which gives them two years to do the construction as indicated in the surety. The applicant will need to address how the roads will be maintained and who's going to maintain those, the future maintenance of those roads. Should the applicant consider creating a homeowners' association? It's recommended that a copy of those covenants be submitted with the final plat to make sure that the proper maintenance is addressed. The preliminary plan meets all of the requirements of our subdivision regulations, and staff is recommending approval of preliminary plan 021-02. I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have. And I can show you a few pictures. So once again, this generally shows the drainage and some of the topographic information, so you can see the roads and the topo, but this shows the, that the roads are currently gravel. You can see that there are a number of mobile homes that have already been removed off the site, and you can see that they have blocked off some of the roads and are preparing them for what appears to be future reconstruction. So I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions for him?
Madam Chair, I got two questions. Yeah, Scott, are there exactly the same number of lots that will be here now, 40? How many were there when there were trailer park?
That, I could not tell you exactly, but I do, but all the lots that are on there, that are being proposed to be platted, meet the subdivision requirements and the zoning requirements. They're all one acre or larger.
Okay, and my second question is, sold off and stick-built homes, how about somebody that wants to move a manufactured home in there? How is that going to qualify?
Well, they would have to apply for a conditional use permit, like we have with other manufactured homes. If it doesn't meet our requirements for what we would classify as a stick-built home, it would need to apply for a conditional use permit. And we do consider, like, the custom touch homes in Del Rap, or in Madison, those are considered stick-built, they can be moved on, so stick-built generally, it's, but I just basically indicated that it's transitioning from a mobile home park to something else.
Okay, thank you very much for answering my question.
Any other questions for him? Is the petitioner here? Will you please step forward, state your name and address?
Bill Peterson, 2720 East Bison Trail, Sioux Falls, South Dakota.
Any questions for him?
It was 42 lots.
Forty-two, okay, thank you.
Anyone else out there care to speak to this item? Nobody on Zoom? Kevin? Okay.
Looks like a good plan to me. I make a motion to approve preliminary subdivision plan 21-02.
I'll second that motion.
Yeah, I have a motion second to approve preliminary subdivision plan 21-02. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. It's been approved, you're free to go. Conditional use permit 21-44 to exceed 2,400 square feet of total accessory building area, requesting 4,200 square feet, and the property legally described is tract one, Struck Second Edition, southeast quarter, northeast quarter, Section 23, Township 103 North, Range 52 West. Petitioner is Ken Mays, he's also the property owner, five miles northeast of Humboldt. Kevin?
Kevin Rockman, County Planning Department. This item is another larger accessory building request. This property actually received a conditional use permit several years ago when it was required to get it one for 1,200 square feet. This is a request for 4,200 square feet. There's an existing building on the property, and the petitioner is requesting to build another 25 feet by 40 feet accessory horse shed. That brings into one more caveat to the typical accessory building is the horses, and with previous experience with horses on small acreages is that manure can pile up, so there is a condition to limit the amount of manure for one year of accumulated manure on the property from horses. Other than that, the conditions are pretty typical, there are seven conditions. Is there any questions?
Any questions for him?
Who does the manure enforcement? Just kidding you.
Is the petitioner here? Will you please step forward, state your name and address?
Ken Mays, 25335, 459th Avenue, 57035.
And you're aware of all the conditions, correct?
Yeah, to keep the horse manure picked up for a year. Pretty much it gets tilled into the ground in the garden, we have a large garden, so that won't be an issue.
Any questions for him? Anybody else care to speak to this item?
I was totally joking, but I tell you what, there are complaints about horse manure. I've had to go out and take pictures and look at pictures, and it didn't look bad to me, but I didn't live next to it, and in any case, I'll make a motion to approve this.
I have a motion and second to approve conditional use permit 21-44. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. That has been approved, you're free to go. We're going to move back to item number two, conditional use permit 21-35 to allow a Class C hog CAFO, 960 animal units on the property, legally described as a proposed tract one of Stockwell Edition, southwest quarter, Section 19, Township 101 North, Range 52 West. Petitioner is Lloyd Stockwell, also the property owner, located eight miles south of Humboldt. Kevin?
Yes, the proposed conditional use permit is for a Class C CAFO, hog CAFO, located approximately eight miles south Humboldt, as you said. The project would be located approximately 100 feet away from the right-of-way at 266 Street, and it's, you can see in our map here that it's about a half a mile away from McCook County is where the location. This site will be specifically in the southeast corner of this property. You can see where there's the Blue Creek Line there, and there's another trench line there that was dug for some drainage, and this barn will be going in between those two lines, those water lines, or waterways. The county ordinance has several situations where a proposed CAFO would meet state requirements, and this CAFO does not meet any of those requirements for meeting a state permit, a state DNR permit, DA and R now. The site plan for the, as shown here, is an important part of any conditional use permit, especially so for CAFOs. There's a list of requirements for the, that have been met by the site plan. It's just scale, it shows the distance to the nearest houses, over 2,000 feet to, I think, the nearest house, and it shows that the property, or that the site, the building will be set back off the road far enough. Staff would note that the ordinance requires 50-foot setback from any property line that's owned by the same property owner. The proposed property is small, and the barn, if that property is platted the way it's shown, does not fit onto that property at 50 foot on all its surrounds. The property owner will own both parcels, it's just a mechanism to separate the barn And so it doesn't pose a problem in the immediate future, but it could pose a problem further in the future if, say, the property gets sold off to somebody else and the barn blows down, and you now have a non-conforming barn on the property. So staff does suggest to the petitioner to replat that property to allow for the 50-foot setbacks on the property. It is not listed in the conditions because it does meet the conditions of 50 feet from all the property lines that the property owner has, but that particular property line should be noted. The barn is going to be far enough away from all waterways. It'll have parking. The petitioner does not include any screening on the site plan. It'll be far enough away from any residences or businesses that screening is not required, but there will be, there's no plans for trees at this time. The required buffer for a single-family dwelling is 1,320 feet from a single-family dwelling church or business, and the submitted site plan indicates the proposed barn is outside of all the required setbacks for the dwellings in the area, so no waivers are needed. I would also note that the petitioner has submitted narratives, including that there will be a dead animal disposal plan, that rendering will be available on the property, and that the dead animals will be stored on the property out of sight of the right-of-way, so they will not be piled up in view of the right-of-way. So I'll just note that in the conditional use criteria, that the effect upon the use enjoyment of other properties in the area, that, and the effect of future use and enjoyment, that this is a largely agricultural area. It has lots of farms and cropland and other, even CAFOs and not-so-far area, there's one to the, mile to the north of this site. That this fits well in the character of the neighborhood and the agricultural production area, and that it may pose problems for future residential development of the area, but being that this is Zoned A1 and firmly within the agricultural production area of the envisioned 2035 comprehensive plan, that this sort of use is... 2035 comprehensive plan, that this sort of use is encouraged in the comprehensive plan. Staff recommends approval of conditional use permit 21-35 with conditions. And there are seven conditions of approval. And I think this time I might go ahead and read off those conditions with, for everybody here tonight. Condition number one, the facility shall be limited to swine confinement of 960 animal units in size. Number two, the facility shall conform to the submitted site plans. Any minor changes such as the shape of the building may be approved by a planning director at Minnehaw County Planning Department. Major changes will require an amendment to this permit and a public hearing. Three, manure containment facility must be in conformance with South Dakota Department of Agriculture and Natural Resources design standards. For any newly constructed waste containment facility, a registered professional engineer shall certify the plan and specifications and the construction of the facility. Four, the proposed barn shall have an engineer-certified drawings that shall be submitted for review of the building inspector prior to the issuance of a building permit. Five, a building permit is required for all structures prior to construction. Six, the CAFO shall comply with all applicable regulations of the county zoning ordinance. And seven, planning and zoning department reserves a right to enter and inspect the CAFO at any time after proper notice of the owner to ensure the property is in full compliance with the conditional use permit conditions of approval and Minnehaw County zoning ordinance. So I just have just a couple of pictometry aerial sites of the property. You'll see my red arrow there indicating the rough location of where this barn will be going. There is a small cluster of residential acreages to the west in McCook County. You can see in that image. So it'd be on the left side of the screen. This is a view from the road, looking roughly where the CAFO would be sitting. This is looking up kind of that creek. It looks like it's just got cleaned out for drainage purposes, but it would be sitting just kind of the left of this image. I'll go back to the aerial images. And I guess I will be here for any questions. And it looks like there's lots of other people here, so we'll have lots to comment.
Any questions for him?
How close is the nearest paved highway on there? Highway 19 or anything else?
It would be Highway 42, a mile to the north.
A mile to the north? Okay.
Okay.
Highway 19 is closer? Okay.
Okay.
I guess I'm wrong.
All right. Just, I just got curious where we were at on here. That's why I just kind of wanted...
Okay, there's where it shows the rough location there.
We may ask you to come back. Is the petitioner here? Will you please step forward? Tell us your name and address.
My name's Lloyd Stockwell. I've lived in the community for about 70-some years now. This is my son Bernard, my grandsons William and Jack. I know that hog confinements are scary to people, but I feel that they're more scary than them, than what they are actually. So I will answer any questions that anyone has. Excuse me. That's all I've got to say unless Bernard, do you have anything?
I guess we were talking about distances. The hog confinement to the north, a mile north, that I think it came out to 1,600 feet from my house, because I live a mile north of here. So that hog confinement that you guys approved was quite a bit closer to my house than what this one will be to any other houses. And this one's, just like that one, is east of my house. Rarely do we get an, rarely do we get an east wind. And so I just don't smell the hog confinement that the neighbor put in very often, and I don't think any of these houses will either.
I'm sure.
Jeff?
So just a question on rendering of deceased animals. Do you have a company that will come and get them? And do you have a, like a pad or something where the bodies are put?
Yes, so our site plan has a spot where the dead pigs would be until the truck can pick them up. I think it's within 48 hours. They get picked up. But yeah, there's a spot so the public can't ever see it from the right-of-way.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Go ahead, Becky.
So the actual location will be kind of more down on the corner of 266 Street, kind of where that, on the, looks like the southeast corner?
Yes, it'll be the southeast corner, as far from the residences as we can.
And then where will traffic, like feed and when it's time to load out pigs and stuff? What road will the trucks take?
I would think the shortest route from the paved road, so they'll take 266.
From the...
Over to Highway 19.
From the east?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions for them? I guess you can sit down for now. And if we have, if there's questions out there, you might have to come back and answer them.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, is there any other people in the audience here that want to speak to this item? I'll take you one at a time. State who you are and your address, please.
Good evening. Eric Willidson, Willidson London Engineering, 902 South Cleveland, Sioux Falls. Many of you may recognize me. I'm usually on the other side of this. A good friend of mine lives in the house in Minnehaw County, just south of the road, asked me to come on his behalf. He is also here tonight, as well as the other four neighbors that own the five residences that are within proximity of this proposed facility. They've lived there many years, some of them, some are new and have just purchased the properties. I expect most, if not all of them, will want to come and speak to you tonight. I'll just tell you, they are vehemently opposed to this within the proximity of these five residences. And to put up a, and this is, you call it 960 animal units. We're talking about a barn. This is 2,400 hogs. We understand that? This building is 400 feet long. So I understand and have explained to them that they have complied with all the regulations placed on them by the county and that, so they are within their rights to do this. They would just ask, and I think they'll express that to you, that they moved this farther away or somewhere else, that 1,300 feet is too close. One of the things that has come up is, and I read in staff's report, is there's not even any screening requirement or landscaping, no berms, no trees, nothing to screen this facility from their houses. So should you choose to approve this, we've come up with some additional conditions that as a planning commission you would be able to place on a conditional use permit. Again, they are under the threshold of what they would be required to submit plans to DENR, DANR, whatever you want to call it. We think that they're so close to that threshold that their manure handling operation should go to DENR for review by an engineer. That the dead animal process on how they do that should also be approved by DENR. And again, we think there should be some screening of some kind if this gets approved to screen this 400-foot-long building from their properties. And nobody's talked about insurance. Is there a requirement that they carry some kind of insurance to take care of a problem should it arise? Should that be a condition as well? Again, here trying to represent them, I think some or all maybe want to express their opinions, but I think they're a little scared, as they said, about their land, their homes and of their properties. How do you, how do you then sell what you have invested in it to someone, oh, but there's a animal confinement facility a quarter of a mile down the road? So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. I know there's going to be a lot of other people up here. If there are engineering things related, certainly ask me. But I think I'll let you talk to them. Questions?
We'll get you, I'm sure.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else care to speak? Come forward, state your name and address.
My name is Kathy Carmen and I reside at 26591 454th Avenue. And that is along 454th, which is just to the west of the property out on 266th. I want to make it known that I am not opposed to ag and economic development and growth. I grew up on a farm in rural Colton, South Dakota. We raised stock cows and dairy cattle, well aware that there are odors associated with living in the rural community. What we would like is proper management and upkeep for the outside of the facility as well as inside. The petitioner is to be good environmental stewards, maintain animal welfare, and practice good neighborly practices. Some concerns on the road is that they are both township-maintained, wanting to know what the current tonnage limits are on those roads that would lead to the location. Who is going to be responsible for building up those roads to support the required vehicles that will travel to them at their maximum capacity? Who will be responsible for the road maintenance and posting the tonnage limits during extremely wet seasons and after the ground thaws in the early spring? Those roads get very, very sloppy in 2018, 2019, when we had extreme moisture. There were times where I had to use four-wheel drive to get down those roads to get to work. And I know others have experienced that as well. And has there been a road haul or a road maintenance agreement with the townships that manage these roads? Do they know, is their agreement made with them as far as their hauling? You had already asked Commissioner Randall about the recommended direction of travel in and out of the facility. I would ask that again, just for the neighboring children's sake. I myself personally lost a stepdaughter and almost lost a biological son at the end of State Highway 42 and 454th. They were rear-ended, pushed into an oncoming semi. I know that no one can ever guarantee the traffic, but my son and I, we also like to ride bikes down these gravel roads and just to kind of know what the flow of traffic is going to be in and out of there. And it has also been addressed that about not having the screening. I had asked Mr. Bernard Stockwell if there would be plans to plant trees, and he had said not at this time, and asked me if I could plant trees on the edge of my property that faces it. Right along the edge of my property line is the rural water main line that runs in front of all of our properties. So I cannot plant any more trees closer to the ditch to prevent my house from seeing the facility. What will the load-in and load-out times be? I know that for livestock, it is generally in the early morning and the late evening hours for the cool transportation of the livestock. But depending on the way they enter and exit the facility, if they are entering in off of State Highway 19 and heading west on 266, the lights will be shining directly in neighbors' houses if it is in the early morning and early evening hours. Who will be managing the facility? Will it be the Stockwells or will it be the management company of the barn? If it is self-managing, how many times are inspections made? You had already also addressed the dust disposal plan, but however, in the warmer months, we all know what can happen and the fact that it, the odor from that in itself, along with the hogs, will be overpowering. Not only that, we are not that far from the river. We hear coyotes at our homes all the time in the evenings, have seen coyotes on, passing on the gravel roads, concerned about the carcasses drawing them in, because a few of us have livestock ourselves and that would be in the direct travel that they would probably come across or attempt to come across and go to the carcasses. What is the plan for pest control to help keep down rats? To also help, because those of us that do have livestock, we also have grain and are concerned about additional pest control in the area. Will enzymes be used in the pit? And if so, what kind? And will those, you know, be harmful to the surrounding properties when it is spread and injected into the land? How often will a pit be emptied? Will it be on a yearly basis or will it be more than once a year? What is the land applying plan? Injecting, knifing, no applicating when it's raining or has been wet by the waterway and the creek bed? Just wanting to just know what they, how they plan to apply it. Will the soil and manure be tested prior to land application to make sure that the proper ratio is applied to the ground so the pH levels stay maintained? And how does the county and state work together on CAFOs? Who has authority? How will inspections be handled? And who checks to make sure, you had addressed this some, Kevin, to make sure that the meeting of the rules and the regulations are met in the conditional use permit and the CAFO? Thank you for your time.
Anyone else care to speak to this item? Please state your name and address.
Hello, Duane Marsh, 45522, 260th Street, 66th Street, Humboldt, South Dakota. I guess my first problem would be a little bit health-related. We tried to raise hog years ago and we found out we were allergic to them with the dust and the smell and manure. So we figured, well, we'll get rid of the hogs. That'll take care of the problem. Well, it didn't. And with age and whatnot, it gets worse. So just traveling through the country, if we're driving down the road and I smell a hog house, I'm going to start coughing right away. And if it's bad enough, why, my chest bothers and I have problems breathing. With that being said, there's some, there's some buildings in the neighborhood that are properly taken care of and I can tolerate them. When they, when they do apply the manure, it's really bad, but it does get better after a week or two. But some aren't maintained and they are atrocious the way they smell. With that being said, I have a property that's about three and a half, four blocks. I didn't measure it out to the exact foot, but just eyeballed it. I have a housing eligibility close to that property, only three, four blocks away. And in the past, we've talked about that possibly I'd put a house there someday or a family member, but if there's going to be a hog house there, that is never going to happen. And then if this building does become a reality, they farm some land that's only 200 feet from my house, so I could actually have manure being applied to my ground 200 feet from my house. And that would be probably, I wouldn't be able to even come out of the house when that happens. I'd have to stay in. That being said, what's that do to our property values? And also, that's, that'll be the fourth... And also, that'll be the fourth, the fourth building in the neighborhood within my house a mile to two miles. I don't know how much water that'll use, but I assume when the hogs get bigger, they're going to use a lot of water. I have an existing well that I would like to keep, and I don't know if that many wells will deplete my well and mess it up. She talked about the gravel. And then the trucks and the hauling and all that. And then, I guess, I would like you to consider what it would be like in your backyard if you had this, and I thank you for your time and for allowing us to speak.
Mr. Marsh, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
So, you know, when you talk about going by some that are properly cared for and some that are not, are they usually the new ones or usually the old ones, or does it matter? Is it the...
The very first one that was put up, the man does an excellent job. When he applies the manure, it's horrible, but like I say, after a week or two, it gets, you can tolerate it.
Because they're always changing the technology and, you know, for the confinement...
I have no idea how they do anything, you know, I just, you know...
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Anyone else care to speak to this item?
Hi, Anna Weinstein, 26609 454th Avenue. I also am pro-ag, grew up a combine's daughter, they still go down south and combine the wheat and all that. We just have four little ones, we just moved in a year ago. We're just very, very concerned about the smell and the traffic and just having a hog confinement that's not well-maintained. If it's maintained well, we're all for it, but we just want to make sure that once, if it does get put up, that it is, like Kathy had said and gone over, that it's maintained and that it's looked after properly.
Anyone else care to speak to this item?
Don McNamara, 26608 454th Avenue. Live in the place, first place to the west in Minnai County. Everything they talk about here, do this, do that, it's still a pig house, and they stink. And it's more when they dump the manure, it ain't the smell, you dump that manure in the field and it stinks for a week. And our property, these people just bought a brand-new house across the road, other people just bought a brand-new house, probably paid $300,000 for them, ain't going to be worth nothing. Ain't nobody going to live there. Ain't nobody going to want to live by them places. And, I mean, it's just, I realize we're in the farm country, but we've been there 25 years, and these other people just bought houses there. There's got to be somewhere else they can put this pig house. I mean, it's just, like you said, do you want one in your backyard? Would you really think that was a good deal for you? So why do we want one? And they got other places, they got to have somewhere else they can put it, I'm sure, whatever, but I don't want it in my backyard, ever. And, you know, so I live another five years, who's going to buy that four acres I live on? Nobody. It's just worthless. It's literally worthless, and you all know it. And the roads out there, we live on the corner of the township, they might never follow the snow, you don't know if they're coming, which is, I don't care if I ever leave or if I need to leave, I'll start the front-end loader and head down to the highway. And the roads are crappy, they, down in the low area down there, you drive down it with a tractor on a rainy day, you can't follow, you can't go that way, hardly. I mean, it's just, it just ain't a good deal. It's not a good deal for anybody. Stockwells, but, you know, you can't win them all. And I, like I tell you, the main thing is bottom line, do you want one of them in your front yard? Nobody wants one. And you get them, but where they built the other ones, it's kind of out in the middle of, it's on the highway and there's nobody else there. Bernie lives across the street from it, down at the corner, but he probably should have bitched about that one. So we're all here to bitch about this one. I mean, I'd stand there and talk to you all night long if you want me to.
Mr. McNamara, is your home on the aerial map that's on the screen? Right there on the, on the corner? Left-hand corner?
Below, 260...
Right there? Thank you.
And they say there's no wind, and you never know which way the wind's blowing out there. Sure, it might be northerly most of the time, but you never know. You don't know. And the main thing is when they spread the shit, or when they spread the manure, excuse me, that stuff is terrible, you all know it. Any of you that live in the country, you know what it's like. And it's rivers and creeks and all kinds of stuff there, and I just don't think it's a good deal. I wouldn't think it was a good deal if I didn't live there because of what it does to the ground. So, I mean, like I said, I'll stand there and talk to you all night if you want to stay here till midnight, I'll tell you all, everything you want to hear about the place. But bottom line is, it's just going to ruin them people's property. It's just going to ruin it. There ain't nobody going to buy them houses for them people. Ain't going to happen. And that's the main thing to me, roads. Them roads are crap anyhow, they maintain them about once every three months, you know, which is fine, there's, you don't, you know, there ain't that much heavy traffic, it's all cars, get kids around there now, you know? They sold the lots where the four houses where these other people live in, whatever, and now they want to put a pig barn up there and ruin them? What do you people think in here? You know, all of you? It don't make damn bit of sense. There's other places that build a pig barn. You don't build it in a place where there's four or five houses sitting, and Marsh got one there. The other people that own the farm ground, I'm sure they got a bunch of eligibilities, and you got houses there, so you're going to get more houses there? They were nothing. So, I mean, I realize it's up to you guys, but we're the ones that got to live there, not you. You don't got to live there, none of you. We do, where we live.
Okay, sir, is there anyone else that care to speak to this item? Please state your name and address.
Scott Bleeker, 26597 West 454th Street or Avenue. I am directly east of the proposed site. About 2014, 2015, the VA diagnosed me with pulmonary emphysema from my health overseas. We moved out here, if I would have known this hog farm was going to be here, not a chance in hell I would have moved out there, because that's going to kill me. I have no problem with farmers making their money, I grew up on it. My farmers, their dairy business went out of business from big business. We visited the site of his property about mile and a half, two miles north, I'm sorry, west of our property, which you can still smell on a windy day. That site is not taken care of. No matter what he tells you, we have the pictures and the neighbors that we've chose to meet, because every store's sites, they can't go outside their house on certain days, and they live north of that facility, about 21,110 feet is what I measured on Saturday. They can't go outside their house, and they have kids. That's going to be my kids. I'm sorry. But, and the fact that Mr. Bernie Stockwell came out on Saturday and made indirect, you know, statements, that if he doesn't get that spot, he's putting up on McCook County north of his shed. I asked him about rendering, he said he wasn't going to do rendering because he doesn't like the idea of a rendering truck coming in, bringing in contaminated pigs, potential contaminated pigs to his lot. He was going to compost. That contradicts what we heard earlier today. So no matter what he says, I don't trust it. But I can see it, I thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Anyone else care to speak to this item?
Good evening, my name is Mitch Peterson, I'm an attorney at Davenport Evans Hurwitz and Smith, 206 West 14th Street. Here in Sioux Falls, I represent Harold Schwartz, who's here as well, so I'm here to speak on his behalf and share his experience. As Mr. Bleeker noted, there's an existing hog barn that is run by the Stockwells that's a mile, mile and a half, as the crow flies, it's just on the McCook County side of the line. It smells atrocious, as Mr. Bleeker has testified. I strongly encourage you to visit with the folks in McCook County, just call the county commissioners of the zoning office to find out how many complaints have been lodged about the odor and the poor management of that facility. Mr. Barth, you said, you know, what kind of barn is this? Is this state-of-the-art? Is it, you know, is it old or new? This is a low-tech barn. It is, it has none of the advanced features in terms of odor control. It doesn't have biofilters, which can be added, particularly when you have pit storage, it's a great opportunity to do that, where the odor is run through different biological medium that sucks up a lot of the odor, doesn't get rid of all of it, but it really improves life for neighbors. They're not even putting in landscaping and trees. Even the staff report calls that out, that there is zero effort, zero effort to control odor. He doesn't care. He doesn't care one bit, and if you have any question, look at the facilities already got running that's a mile to a mile and a half away. I'm speaking here on behalf of Mr. Schwartz, because he has pending litigation against Mr. Stockwell for the very facility that is a mile to a mile and a half here alleging that it is a nuisance because of the odor and the manner in which it is improperly operated. The barn that is going here is this, I'm not an engineer, but it looks like the same barn, it's the 2,400 head, the long 400-foot barn with a couple fans in the middle and pit storage. It looks like exactly the same facility, and whether it's competence and aptitude, or whether it's attitude, or whether it's lack of help, because it's hard to find help in all sectors these days, but his other facility isn't run. I would suggest he gets that one operating properly before he tries to put up another one right around the corner, even closer to the homes of these people that are sitting right here, that have invested in all likelihood their life savings in those homes. Ultimately, you know, the purpose of the ordinances under Section 102 is to try to promote health, welfare, proper development. While this certainly is, it's farm country, it's agricultural country, you got to look at this specific area, you can see it from the aerial photograph that was put up in the staff report, that you've got this cluster of houses just down the road from this thing, just a little bit outside the setback, 2,000 feet is, it's a nine iron away from a quarter mile, which is the, that's the limit on this. And you've got another facility that's right a mile away from it, you've got so many houses and additional housing eligibilities that would be within the setback, that you'd just be, you'd be throwing away that development. For what? In what way is this compatible with what's going on out there and the overall goals of this county in terms of development? Ultimately, the CAFO has particular use requirements under 12.10, requiring siting plans and setbacks, but even if all of those things are met, that merely makes the Stockwells eligible for a conditional use permit. It does not entitle them to one. If they don't meet any of the minimum requirements, you have to say no to it, because they're not meeting the minimums. They'd have to get a variance or get the ordinances changed. But just because they meet it and they're within their rights, as Mr. Willitsen said, that doesn't mean you just rubber stamp it, you still have a decision to make here. If it was just a rubber stamp process, it wouldn't be a conditional use permit, it'd be a check-the-box building permit. That's not the way that this body is empowered. Specifically, under Section 1901, which is applicable to all conditional use permits, you may grant or deny based on a variety of factors, including health, safety, and the general welfare of the county and that particular part of the county. More specifically, under Section 1905, under Part C of 1905, you have the power to deny a conditional use permit that you find not to be in harmony with the purpose and intent of the ordinances. That's, even if it meets all the specific requirements, if this doesn't seem harmonious with what's going on out there already, you have the ability to say no to it under 1905C. Additionally, 1905D sets forth six different factors that you can look at when making your determination whether this is a good idea or not, and exercising your power and your discretion to make a decision for this county and this neighborhood. And those factors are important. Number one is the effect upon the use and enjoyment of other property in the surrounding area for uses that are already permitted. You've heard from the neighbors how this will affect them. That alone is enough to say no to this. Under Section, Point 2, this is 1905D Point 2, you have to look at the effect upon the normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding vacant property. I would suggest that what you've got for surrounding vacant property is a lot of housing eligibilities and a lot of high-end housing for people that want to build 300, 400, $500, 000 houses and acreages, that's great development right near the corner of Highway 19 and Highway 42. That is going to be a big corner as the county, or as the city continues to grow into the county. It'd be a shame to throw that away for a poorly-run hog barn. Under Point Number 3, drainage is one of the things you need to look at. From the staff report, this is at the top of a hill with a trench for drainage on one side and water on the other side. So what happens when we get that 100-year storm that seemed to be coming about every other year right now? What happens to all the pit storage? It runs downhill. Gravity's going to affect this exactly like it does anywhere else. It's at the top of the hill and that's right in your staff report. Point Number 5, you are to look at measures that are taken to control, among other things, odor and dust. They're not doing anything to control that. Nothing. Zero effort, zero dollars put into being a good neighbor. And finally, Point Number 6, you can look at the health, safety, and general welfare of the public and the comprehensive plan. And at the bottom of that list, the ordinances make clear that in addition to any of the specific use requirements for a CAFO, that being 12.10, they also have to satisfy all of these conditional use requirements. And on an appeal to court, your decision would be absolutely bulletproof. Now, obviously, the next appeal goes to the Board of County Commissioners, but when you make a decision where you are weighing whether this is a good idea and in harmony with what's going on, you have a lot of power and a lot of discretion that courts are not allowed to second-guess. Courts are only allowed to look at whether you took an illegal act or not. Whether you made the right decision on weighing the factors, the court doesn't even get into that. So your decision essentially is bulletproof. You've heard from everyone in the room why you should say no, and you've heard from me on the ordinances why you can say no. And we'd encourage you to say no to this. It's a bad idea, it's not the right place for this kind of development.
Anyone else care to speak to this item? State your name and address.
Hello, good evening. My name is Callie Bryant, Leaker, 26597 454th Avenue. My home will be an eighth of a mile to a quarter of a mile from the hog facility. I am a very visual person, so I brought you pictures. Not the type of neighbor to talk about my neighbors this way, so please don't take me as this type of person. I just wanted to show you how they currently take care of their current property. This picture is on 454th and Highway 42, you can see it from the road. I zoom in for you guys, so you can see how they do not take care of their junk or their trash, and this is considered being cleaned up. Usually there's bags, there's papers. This is about a quarter mile from my house. This is their shop, two houses down from me, about an eighth of a mile from my house, right by where they want to put the hog barn. The next pictures I have are of their current hog barn, and again, this is cleaned up. They continue to throw junk back there, things that could be disposed of very easily. They do not take time to take care of their property. More oil barrels that were not taken care of at the hog barn. All of these were taken from the road or the neighbors' property. All of these were taken from the road or the neighbors' property. The last and final picture I have for you is dated May 17, 2020, last May. We had many dead hogs out there for three to four weeks. The neighbor said he finally had to call the sheriff to turn him in. We have many coyotes that we hear nightly. We don't want this anywhere near our livestock. The next thing I have to present to you is a petition of everybody that is seated here, except for the very 13th signature. The 13th signature is the house right across from his current hog barn. He told me that we would be very sorry if this went in because of the smell and the carelessness that the Lloyd, that the Stockwells currently take care of their hog barn. You can keep the pictures. Thank you.
Anyone else care to speak to this item? Anyone on Zoom?
Scott, make sure these get in the record.
Kevin, anybody on Zoom at all? Okay.
Hi, my name is Nancy Ann Roberts. I am from Chester, South Dakota, 57016, 4211, Horizon Heights. I'm speaking on behalf of my mother, Isla Matthew. She purchased the property for my sister, Kathy Carmen. She purchased it with the good intent that it was going to be a safe place for her to be with her husband, who had ALS, and has since passed away. My sister's been through a lot. It has nothing to do with the Stockwells. We grew up on a farm. We grew up farming and working hard and working for our money. I understand that. But this many barns, this close to houses, when you were just a little while ago talking about a daycare, putting a certain chemical on the road to control dust, and we haven't even talked about that tonight here for this hog barn, which is going to bring in a lot of vehicles. My concern is the value of this property. My sister was going to put up a barn. She since has reluctantly told the builder, you can't come now. And that was two weeks ago. That's kind of sad. I just want a healthy, safe place for my sister and her children to go home to. It's a home, just like all of their homes. So please take that into consideration, and thank you for your time.
Anyone else? Mr. Stockwell, you want to come back and address any of those items?
So the weeds did get tall this spring at my first hog barn. You can drive by now, they're, they're all cleaned up. It's mowed, just like it was last fall. We did get shorthanded with COVID. It's been hard to hire help. I've been in the planter. My dad's getting older to run the Jiro mower and the weed eater. Not really capable of that, but I, since I, I did hire a guy specifically for groundskeeping, and he came out Sunday and did an awesome job, a guy from Parker. So I think I'm going to keep him on, you know, weekly to mow the grass at that barn. And when the other one comes online, he can do the other one. Because I realize that groundskeeping is important, and sometimes I do get too busy for it. I am fourth generation here. My kids will be fifth generation. We can't keep doing agriculture the way we've been doing it. You know, the last three or four years, we've gone in the red. I've had some very uncomfortable conversations with bankers, because the cash flow hasn't been there with grain markets. But the hog barn is a bright spot in the financial picture of things, and it's a bright future for my kids. You know, I've grown up all my life raising pigs, and this is a labor saver. It's a risk saver. Keeps my kids on the farm, keeps a fifth generation in this area. It's a good life, and I guess, everyone keeps saying it's so close, it's so close. It's nearly a half a mile, and this barn would be further from any of these houses than what the barn that's a mile north is to my house. I just want to reiterate that. When he put his barn in, I didn't have any complaints about it, because I see all the benefits. You know, we're not putting all that artificial manure in the soil. We're not, you know, having, if we tried raising hogs outdoors now, all that runoff. Now this is completely contained. When we apply it, we hire a professional to come apply it, inject it within the soil. They stay so many feet from residents, whatever the county or state or local code is, he looks that up and complies with it. I know he stays at least 100 feet from any waterway, and I think the requirement's only 50 feet. So we're, we're good stewards of the land. I wouldn't be here a fourth generation through all the tough times if we weren't doing something right. You can nitpick and find different mistakes people make. I think you go behind most farmsteads, you're going to find a junk pile or a burn pile. It's been really dry, so we haven't burned our net wrap. I, I guess I didn't have the opportunity to look at the pictures, but I assume it's, I assume it's our burn pile. And I guess if people have concerns about the way I'm doing stuff, I really wish they would talk to me, and I would rectify them. I do want to be a good neighbor. You know, I've been friends with these people, you know? There's two or three of them here that have my pork in their freezer right now. They were fine with it when it was two or three miles away. They don't like it being closer to them. I, I don't know. I guess this is, I'm not farming with my grandpa's M Farmall. I'm not driving his 63 Chevy. I'm not going to raise pigs on dirt like he did. But raising pigs is, is in my blood. My kids are great at it. You know, they can pick out sick pigs. They can, you know, pick out small ones. They're, they're great help in the barn. I just want an opportunity for them to grow, and, and I, I think that can be done, you know, symbiotically. I think right now, the, the fear of change, the fear of a hog barn is much greater than an actual hog barn. I invite any one of you to drive out tomorrow morning and look at my hog barn. I did get it trimmed up, and that's how it usually is. I think the, the last time I had that rendering company come, it would have been in January of '20. So since then, I doubt anyone's been able to get a picture of a dead pig at my pig barn. It's not going to happen. And it won't at this one either. And they'll never be in view of the public. But everybody knows where I live. I mean, it's a mile from this spot. It's 1,500, 1,600 feet from the neighbor's hog barn. We all get along pretty well. A lot of these people have asked me for help before, you know, whether it's clearing, clearing snow, or someone slides in the ditch and I pull them out. They maybe didn't even know who I was, but after going and talking to them about the hog barn, I recognize them. You know, I'm, I'm there for my neighbors. And, and I would do anything to come knock on my door and need something. I mean, Jerry's cows got out in Duane's farmyard last winter, and I spent three hours out there in the wind helping him. You know, I never ask for nothing. I, I jumped at the chance. I brought my little boy with in a spotlight. I mean, I, I have been a good neighbor. I mean, you can grab a few snapshots here and there, but it's not, it's not representative of someone who's been here for a year, you know? And we've been here four, now five generations. And two of these neighbors have been lifelong friends of mine. And I, I get it that they don't want a hog barn close to them, but I promise, the fear of this is way worse than what reality is. There's a reason no one living north of my hog barn came and talked to me, because they've realized with the enzymes I put in, the smell has dissipated a lot. And sure, if you drive on the, on the north side of my current hog barn in the summer, it's going to smell, because you typically have south winds in the summer. And the neighbor to the north, if you drive by that in the winter, his is going to smell and mine's not. So it, it, it was really a yearly thing, but I know from farming. I watch the winds for weather. East winds are really rare. You know, southeast, you get some of that, but we're going to be far enough east that my house a mile away will smell it before any of these people will. And that's what they signed up for when they moved out in the country. They signed up for farm smells. If I moved to Sioux Falls, I would be signing up for higher crime rates or, you know, closer proximity of neighbors. You know, there might be a Walmart that goes up next door. That's a risk you take buying a property. And I'm sure they all signed that, that right to farm easement. You know, that, that's just a risk that, that you take, and I'll do everything I possibly can to mitigate the smell. You know, I'll use the maximum amount of enzymes. If you guys think I should put in some trees, I'll gladly do that. As far as if the township is going to take care of the road, I guess I had to get their signatures, and they approved the extra driveway, so they know I'll be using the road. But I'm sure if I have loadouts during a, right after a snowstorm, I'll be responsible for clearing it, because I'm managing it. A lot of times, I got to go get bales of hay south of these guys, so I'm the first one through. I get there way before the road grader. You know, sometimes I'm the reason some of you can get to work, and you don't know it, because you weren't awake yet when I was feeding cattle. You know, I don't ask for a thank you. I mean, there's things that I've done that are good that they didn't get up here and say, even though they already have the pork that I raised in their freezer. Ask you to approve it and give me a chance to prove that it's good for the land and good for the community and good for the future of agriculture. Thank you.
I agree, Bernard, to be a good neighbor. Harold Schwartz had a lawsuit running way before any barns, anything else. This is a net pecky issue with him. This was started after the other lawsuit, so this is an ongoing thing. So I'm asking you to disregard that. As far as housing property, a house just sold north of the current hog building, it brought $450,000. We own a rental house. We get $1,000 a month out of it. The barn has been up two years. It's been empty one month. Talk about the road. None of these people realize this. This is a township road, 66 feet, four rods. You go out there and you drive by there where my land is, and on both sides, fence was tore out. The ditches are 90 feet wide, so no snow collects there. That's the kind of neighbor I am. That's taken an extra four acres for me that I done. Them houses that got sold, them wasn't me selling them. That was my brother. So just a few things to be straight about. Been good to them. Bernard's been good neighbors. I want to be good neighbors to anybody. If there's any problems whatsoever, you guys got the regulations there, honor. Come and tell us. We'll try to meet them. We will meet them. So I ask you to approve that. Thank you very much for letting me speak.
Okay, I think we've heard enough testimony for tonight, and I'm going to close the floor. Commissioners?
Madam Chair.
Jeff.
I tell you, we've had some really good thoughts brought out tonight, and I, I do sincerely appreciate them. And I've, I've often given this little spiel of coming, but, you know, this is zoned egg, not museum. That said, people are upset about all kinds of things. One day, we approved, I think it was three hog CAFOs and a cell tower. And the cell tower got appealed because the nearby cows weren't going to give milk to their spouses. MS was going to act up, kids texting, we're going to be killed. That was the cell tower. It almost doesn't matter what, you know, a dog kennel, a daycare even. It is difficult. I know we had people complaining about the veteran cemetery that's being built, even though they plan to be buried there. And it's, it is usually more frightening than the reality once, once it's there. That said, I, I do share some of the concerns that have been brought forward, and I'm not sure that I'm ready to approve this this evening.
Any other comments, Commissioners?
Madam Chair, I'd just like to say a few things. Everybody moved out into rural South Dakota, correct? And we all sign right to farm. I'm a farmer. We have a dairy herd. There's all kinds of concerns that we are going to wreck the whole community when we built 14 years ago. We have not had one complaint since we put this up. It's a lot of fear factor. And I, I would too. If I were you, you moved out there, you really don't know what might go on. It's a lot of fear factor. There's a lot of things. I'm sure they have their soil analyzed. They put so many gallons on them and there to meet the right amount, because they want to, they want to fertilize as much ground as they can off of that. I heard a 100-year flood. Well, guess what? That pit, the water does not rain into the pit. It goes off the roof. So don't say the pit is going to overflow because of the rainwater. But I, I, I feel for you. You moved out there, you signed the right to farm. There are so many things. You can go talk to your neighbors. If you don't like it, go talk to them. They'll probably gladly correct it, or you can work something out. You know, personally, I wouldn't be, I'd, I'd make a motion right now that they, on the south end of their property, that they do put up three rows of trees, if that would help. Because in the summertime, your predominant wind are from the south, and you will not hardly even notice it. Because we've heard that at our place all the time. We have a rot quarry a third of a mile south of it. South of us, guess what? We get a lot of dust from that. That's part of living out in the country. The country is a great place to live, raise a family. So I'm just going to leave it at that, and I stated my feelings.
Anyone else?
Yeah, Madam Chair. I guess I moved out. Where I live now, just right north of Crooks, there's a pig barn, probably, I don't know, twice the size, three times the size of this, just three quarters of a mile north of me. I can't say I've ever had an issue with them. I know every building's different, but I can't, I'm just saying, I'm, I'm fine with where I'm at. We just had a house just right north of us there, half mile of that, sold for very big bucks, under a million bucks, so that doesn't seem to bother them. Just wanted to comment that one of them brought up, the tonnage on the roads or whatever, that's set by your township. Your township thinks the roads are getting too beat, excuse me, too beat up or whatever in the spring. They set weight limits on it, so that's just something to think about there.
Anyone else?
This is, well, I guess we don't have anybody on Zoom. I appreciate-
This is, well, I guess we don't have anybody on Zoom. I appreciate all of the comments we've heard tonight. Appreciate hearing from the proposal and from the people who have concerns. Based on all of the concerns I've heard, I think that a tree screen would probably be a good idea. I am, I live in a similar place. I have a hog building just down the road from me, and the only time I smell it is when they knife in and on the, on really still days. Sometimes that I can smell it a, a little bit, but it's, it's nothing, it's nothing bad. But there's not a tree screen around that facility either. So, I think a tree screen probably would be something that would be helpful, and the petitioner indicated that that would be something that he would be willing to do. But as Doug said, everybody's got a pretty stringent manure management plan that they have to adhere to. And anyone that's had a KFO knows all the paperwork that has to get done to, to meet the requirements of that plan. And as Doug also said, they wanna make sure that that manure gets spread in the proper places. They don't wanna waste it, and they don't want to let any of the nutrients get too high. So, I guess those are my only comments. Thank you all for sharing your thoughts with us tonight.
Yeah, I'd echo what Adam and Doug and Commissioner Randall said, too. I lived right down, or my dad lives right down the road, less than a quarter mile from my hog, hog barn. It's, it's hardly any smell at all, just like Becky said. And I run a KFO myself, and we follow a lot of regulations, and so I would be in support of this.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Jeff.
I agree with my fellow commissioners, and while I think that this is a reasonable plan, I also think that there needs to be more of the details worked out as far as like trees and landscaping and, and even the roads, 'cause I know that potentially roads can be improved to allow for heavier traffic. And, and I'll tell you, the picture we had of hogs, you know, I can recall approving another hog KFO, and staff had a regulation that there had to be a, a six-foot fence around the, the pad, concrete pad where the hogs were put. And the, and the farmer who lived up your way, Becky, said none of them had jumped his three-foot fence yet, so he didn't know why he needed a six-foot fence. And, and you know, there was no regulation on this particular one for the, the, a screen around the, the dead pigs, was there, or?
There is a general requirement that-
General requirement, okay.
Are that dead animals need to be screened.
Well, I, I, I feel like we could flesh this out just a little bit and make it much more appealing to the neighbors. And again, as neighbors, I can tell you that after it's, I, I was at a, a hog barn up by Jasper, and the farmer kept apologizing for the smell. I was walking in with the pigs. I hardly smelled anything. They had the pit below that everything went to, and I didn't know what he was, he was the one that seemed to be bothered by it. But I, I do think that we can flesh this plan out a little bit further and, and make it a better plan. That's just my thought.
Any other comments?
I would agree, I agree with Jeff. Technically, I guess we don't even have a motion on the floor anyway, so.
No, not yet. I just wanna reiterate, too. I appreciate everyone being here tonight. I live east of Sioux Falls at about four acres. I have farmers all around me, folks. I choose, I chose to live there over thirty years ago. I knew what I was getting myself into, but I raised my family there. And we try to be good neighbors as much as we can. And I'll let you know that, you know, if I had trouble with the Doug Odys or, or the Wrights who live to the east of me, or the Johnsons who live to the west of me, I just went over there and we politely had a good conversation. I can't say that everything was worked out the way probably that I wanted it to, but I also didn't know that, I wasn't gonna move either, because I loved to live where I lived. Sometimes you have to make difficult choices. But I knew that, I know that, you know, it goes with everything, you know. Sometimes when we approve something, it's, we're not gonna please everybody. That's just how it works. Our main goal is to decide land values or make sure that we actually do land choices and do them the right way. That's all. I guess at this point, I'm open to any further discussion or any motions.
I guess, Madam Chair, I'd like to add three rows of trees. I think, would the west end be more accurate there to kinda buffer it a little bit?
Madam Chair, could we have the petitioners come up? So, okay, Adam and I were, would you have problems putting at least three rows of trees up?
No, that'd be fine, on the west end.
What, what, what would the neighbors be happy with? The west end or where?
West end.
I was gonna say, why don't you just move it out of here?
It sounds like.
Three rows of trees on the west end it is.
Yep.
Doug, if I might just tap on it. I mean, do you want a minimum height requirement? So, we're not, a four-inch tree day one. I mean, do you wanna have a six-foot height?
You tell me how, how tall to make them, and I'll get them that night.
For the height of-
I'm just trying to be a little more conscientious to the neighbors that, you know, we say three rows, and, you know, we're going to the extension office for saplings. I just don't want that to be a, a twenty-year plan. So, I think maybe a six-foot height to start and-
Just a minimum of six foot.
I think those ast trees grow really fast, and then, so you have a fast-growing row, and then you put in some slower stuff.
Is that what they do, Doug?
Yeah.
That sounds good, too.
And, and be done this year?
Yeah. I can do it this year.
Okay. I'd be happy with that, okay. Three rows of trees, west side, planted in 2021.
Yes.
Okay, we got that. Do you want a minimum height on that or not? To start off or not? What do you, what do you people all think? I know you, evergreens, you aren't gonna spend that much money to get six-foot tall evergreen right away.
Maybe one of the rows-
One would be a minimum of six feet.
There you go.
How many trees in a row? Three trees or twenty trees?
Well, your, your west fence line, or your west boundary line is how long?
Well, if I do the width of the barn, the width of the, the width of the barn is like fifty-one feet, so if I did seventy-five feet from the fence line out into the field, that should more than cover the fifty-one-foot barn. One row of six-foot trees, and then I guess I, I don't know what.
Evergreens?
Yeah, I can do a row of evergreens, a row of six-foot non-evergreens.
Yeah. What's a tree again that grows fast? Ast. Ast. Put those in, they grow really fast.
Okay.
Kevin, what's going on over there?
I'm just laughing.
Can I, can I-
Throwing my landscaping.
So, I mean-
Don't, don't we have, aren't there actual guidelines?
Well, that's, that's what I was gonna ask, is maybe-
That we don't, and, and I think maybe Commissioner Barth is right, that we just need a little more time to, I don't know, get it all kind of fleshed out.
Madam Chair, you know, I guess I'd kinda concur with Becky. You know, we can say your night's a six-foot height, or it needs to be an evergreen. I know there are resources out there that work with KFOs to design proper screening, you know, based on the winds and so forth. And I'm not gonna say or pretend that I know how to do that. So, not to kick the hand down the road, but maybe more appropriate course to be to come back with a, a site plan showing some screening and showing the, the fence or whatever you propose around, where you, you know, keep your dead pigs. Might be a more appropriate action to put some actual finite guidelines to what we're approving.
I guess I, I can agree to-
So, yes, he, yes, with that motion, I guess my motion would be to defer, but with that, I guess I would request that you would come back with a, a site plan that just shows three rows of trees, and here's what they're gonna be. Here's what my screening looks like. Things like that. I mean, real simple.
But that delays, that delays the project. That increases cost. You know, price of steel just keeps going up. I need to get my price locked in. I'll agree to whatever, whatever you wanna say in writing.
If we deferred it a month, so we had the, the site plan for the tree plantings, you could still order your steel, so we wouldn't be delaying you that way?
I'm gonna lose out on my dirtwork crew. They're gonna move on to other projects.
They'll be back. They like green money.
I guess I, I would much rather agree to put three rows of trees in and never have hogs visible from the public road. Whatever kind of trees you want. You want three rows of evergreens, we can put them five feet apart. You want three rows of cottonwoods. Whatever you wanna put in writing, I guess I don't know what else needs to be fleshed out. If that's our hangup, is the tree grove and the dead removal. I can put in writing today that no one will ever see a dead pig from the public road on the property, and there will be three rows of whatever trees, whatever spacing, whatever height you want. I'll jump through whatever hoop you want, but I don't wanna lose out on my dirtwork crew, and I don't want the price of steel to go up. 'Cause my bank's not gonna let me do a down payment on the steel without your guys' permit.
Madam Chair, what do you think?
Jeff.
What do you think? He's been doing this a long time.
Oh, I don't know.
I, I just, I'm not comfortable doing it on the fly here. I know that we've had landscapers do this stuff. The Minnehaw County Conservation District has trees and professionals that plant them.
Sure. I'll hire a professional. I'll put it in writing. I'll hire a professional to do the trees.
Perhaps what we could do is have the applicant work with our staff to upgrade their plan as they go forward, I think. Kevin, Scott, do you sort of understand what our concerns are at this point?
Sure.
Yeah, I mean, it's all, it's about the, the landscape, a landscape plan and a screening plan for the, for animal, dead animals. Those are the two items you want, right?
So, and I, I don't know enough about enzymes to know which one needs to be used, or the plan. I know that farmers like to get manure, the ones that grow crops. And I also know that mulching your, your dead pigs works pretty well. We had, who's that farmer linebacker of the Vikings? Greenway, Brad Greenways, his uncle mulchism, and, you know, you, they're completely gone in a month, just in, in mulch pile that turns. So, when that missing farmwife is, when they're looking for it and they find the wedding ring in that barrel, call CSI. But it's, there are technologies that can be deployed that can improve things, and I, I, I think the day will come when, through genetic manipulation, we'll have pigs that don't stink. I don't know. Then we'll put those plants right here in Sioux Falls. But work with, work, I'll make a motion to ask the applicant to, to approve the application. Ask them to work with Scott and Kevin to flesh out the, the application as far as landscaping and stuff. And do we have a pest plan in there? A pest, I remember we had that one that wanted to get cats.
Antera requires-
Yeah, that's what I thought.
For there to be rat bait out.
And I think there's maps that show which way the, the odor goes, et cetera. I don't know.
Is that a motion, Jeff?
Yes, I, whatever I said.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay. I have a motion and a second for conditional use permit, twenty-one dash thirty-five. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. It's been approved.
I abstain.
Hey, any old business?
I hired a new planner. He starts next Tuesday, June first. Just graduated from FCSU. His name's Mason Stephan.
Entertaining motion adjourned.
Okay, I'll second it.
All right.
Aye.
Aye.
I'll write ten minutes on that. I wrote it down.